Make the motion to approve the minutes of the last town board meeting held on 11/28/2018.
Second.
Any board comments?
I did get someone asked me and I didn't have an answer for him. A copy of the budget mods that we approved last meeting, there's one line on there where we transferred $22,901 from state retirement to building South Bay.
Shirley's on vacation.
Shirley's on vacation. It was, I think it had to do, I'm pretty sure it had to do with the expenses that we incurred on that building. We're in the process, counselor, of moving that back to South Bay Fire Department.
Right.
But for breakdown, I would have to ask Shirley.
Okay, good.
That's what I'm going to do. Any further board discussion or comments? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If nay, any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept abstract number 49 dated December 5th, 2018, and abstract number 50 dated December 12th, 2018, as presented.
Second.
Any board comments?
I had a couple of questions and Shirley is away, so I didn't get all my answers, but I'll follow up with them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If nay, any abstentions?
Nay.
I'm sorry?
Nay.
Nay. So, we have one nay, please record the vote. And we pass, thank you. Budget mods, they're none tonight. We'll move to the police department recognition. We have officers of our police department here and some of our volunteers in police service. And the reason why I asked them to be here, with all of you, is earlier this year, our police department went through their re-accreditation. And I sat with the auditors who came from Albany and who had actually done the audit of our police department. And I can tell you that sitting with them and asking questions and having them review the items that were reviewed and were audited, I can tell you that we have undoubtedly one of the finest police departments in central New York. I like to say only because they're part of our Cicero team, we have the finest police department in central New York to do an absolutely outstanding job. We can be very, very proud of them. And I want to tell you something. I sell, those of you who follow what happens here in Town Hall, I sell Cicero all the time. I'm on, you know, whether I'm talking to developers, whether I'm talking to business people, prospective business people, the media, and one of the things I like to say is, I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but Cicero is the third safest town in New York State for populations over 25,000. Now, what does that tell you about our police department? We have safe neighborhoods, good, that go along with good schools, and I'm very, very proud, as you should be, of our police department. So I'd like to read this. This certificate of accreditation, don't come down. Be it hereby known that the Cicero Town Police Department, originally accredited in 2003, demonstrates a high level of excellence and professionalism in the field of law enforcement by continuing to meet the standards established by the New York State Law Enforcement Agency Accreditation Council. The council is proud to once again award accreditation to the agency for the period of September 6th, 2018, through June 6th, 2023. And this is signed by Chief Marvin J. Fisher, who is the chairman, Michael Green, the executive deputy commissioner of the Division of Criminal Justice Services, and Michael Wood, deputy commissioner, Division of Criminal Justice Services. Chief, if you come up. Thank you so much for the job that you do and our officers do for this town. You're a credit to the town of Cicero, and I'm proud to be associated with you.
Oh, thank you so much.
This will be... We are going to hang this here in the auditorium, the original. The reason why we waited on this is the original is hanging there, and we had asked Albany for a copy, so that everyone who walks into this building can be just as proud of the police department when they see this as we are here tonight. Thank you again.
Thank you. I would just like to thank the town board. I've been here 22 years now, and every town board I've worked for has supported us, and I want to appreciate that. Thank you for your support, your continued support. And again, we couldn't do this without the minimum of the Cicero Police Department and the community we serve. It makes our job a lot easier. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move right along. The public hearing was, we were supposed to have a public hearing tonight to consider a zone change from RM Residential Multifamily to General Personal for the property located at 6722 Lake Shore Road. I apologize, we sent notices out via social media, the newspaper, for whatever reason, didn't get it published. We were a day short in the publication. We want to follow the law to the letter, so we will have the public hearing on that zone change at the next town board meeting. I apologize for the inconvenience to anyone. John?
Moving on from the resolution, to schedule a public hearing for Wednesday, January 9th, 2019, at 6:30 p.m. to consider the placement of the stop sign on El Zaren Drive at the southern intersection of El Zaren Drive and the Zudo Drive.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If nay, any abstentions? We carry unanimously. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Do you agree with the resolution to reschedule the public hearing?
I will. I move for the adoption of the resolution to reschedule the public hearing to consider the zone change from RM Residential Multifamily to GC General Personal for the property located at 6722 Lake Shore Road, tax map number 080 dot dash 01 dash 25 dot 1. And we will move that to January 9th, 2019, 2019, at 6:30 p.m.
Second.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If nay, any abstentions? Thank you. Highway Garage Project. I'll move for the adoption of a resolution to authorize the following expenses for the Highway Garage Project. $25,249.30 MRB, $469.74 to Corin Maine, $8,360 to Terricon, $38,878.48, or $47 cents rather, to JBS Dirt, $33,250 to Bosch Mechanical, $185,416.92 to Landco, and $1,283,037.70 to Building Innovation Group.
Second.
Don Snodgrass, would you like to come up and talk to us about some of these expenses and how we're doing over there? Please.
We're doing great. We have actually one more bay of steel to install, and then all the structural steel will be in. We started blockwork of the wall separating the mechanical area and office area from the main build, from the main storage area for our trucks, is up. You got to drive by when it's light, don't try it when it's dark. Drive by when it's light. You will not be able to see the back of the building. The building is 83 feet long, and it has to be in order to put all the vehicles that we have in that garage. Just explaining, because initials and whatnot don't make sense to a lot of us if we haven't been involved. MRB, that is our engineering design firm, that is a fee that we owe them. Corin Maine is where we have bought a lot of pipe and fittings. You can see that number keeps going down because we're almost done with that area. We purchased the material for the site contractor. We are not purchasing any material for the general building. Terricon is the outfit that we hire to come in and test soil, to test concrete, to test the structural integrity of the steels going up. JBS Dirt was, was and is our site contractor. They've got a fair amount of gravel and paving to do in the spring. Bosch Mechanical is our plumber. A lot of the money that we're paying them for right now, even though there isn't a lot in the ground, is you pay a contractor when he delivers material to the site. And he has delivered a lot of material for our drainage system in the garage there. It's a pre-engineered drainage system. It is expensive because of what it does. Landco is the contractor that's putting in the sewer system. The sewer system is in, it's been tested. We only have one problem. We are working with NIMO to get power to the station. It's being worked on. Luckily, we don't need it right now, but they're working that in conjunction with the power temporary impairment for the main site. The Maine 283, that just sounds like an awful lot of money. And I told Mark that I'd like to explain why that number's so big. You probably will not see another number like that on this job. But if you, first of all, you're allowed to give the contractor some general condition money and supervision money that's there. But the big things, concrete foundation labor was $193,000. We're paying them $116,000. Truth of the matter is, if this bill was paid or was submitted today, that number would be almost the whole number because the foundation work is complete. $79,000 for the material, that's a lot of concrete, a lot of steel. Rebar, $97,000 is in this payment today. The steel labor to date, $60,080 is what we're paying them. As I said, as of tomorrow, 100% of the steel will be in the air, then all they've got to do is do some tying up loose ends, I guess I would say, where they're making sure everything's square, all the wind racing is on, so that's what they've got to do. And the building steel, what we got from Mexico, is $1,670,000. So, the major, we have two other pieces for the building, the liner material and the trim is another $30,000, $35,000. So, that just helps you to understand why the number's so big. It's all within our bond money at this point. Maybe before we go to the next one, let me bottom up here, I'll just do the explanation of the change order.
Okay.
We have here. We need it because of weather. The weather has kept us, from a site standpoint, raining a lot this summer. Chris and I don't think there's as much rain as the contractor said there was, but there was enough. We had to have a lay-down yard for all the steel. We paid extra money to have that done. Trust me, it's paid off in dollars. We got today four truckloads of roofing material. These are panels, up to 47 feet long, four inches thick, steel, foam, steel. It takes up a lot of space. Had they sent the wall material, we'd probably shut down 31 and just spread it along the highway or something like that. The, when we were doing that, though, we ran into a condition where we found the electrical contractor did not backfill his conduit runs with stone. He backfilled it with dirt. We had to, in fact, dig that out because that was going to be at the bottom of this platform we had to build for the steel guy. That cost us about $30,000. You'll see today, we're doing a change order to JBS Dirt to pay him that $30,000. But we're doing a credit change order to the electrician because he's paying for that work. The last one, the Building Innovation Group for the, we had to make a correction. It's not a two-inch caisson, it's a two-foot custom. So, it's a piece of concrete, two foot diameter. On the top, it is anchor bolts, and they stick out of the ground about five feet. They are for the future, if you remember, we had a number of things we wanted to do in this building and a number of things we didn't do. One of them was we wanted lean-to's for a lot of Chris's miscellaneous material and miscellaneous equipment. We couldn't do that, but it was absolutely critical for us to pay while the drill rig is there, to drill the caissons for the future area, because what we paid, I think about $27,000, $31,000, that would have probably been $50,000 down the road. And we can now kind of do some of our own work now that that impossible work is done because these guys charge a lot of money to come and set up. That was already, that was already the job. So that's why we'll see that one. I guess that's all. I hope that explains everybody where we're at.
It does. Thank you. Thank you both, Don, for the work that you guys do out there. I know you're on site every day, and you've been our eyes and ears on this project, and we certainly, I honestly appreciate it. Thank you. We'll move on now to the change order, or actually, we had a second on the expenditures, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If nay, any abstentions? We carry unanimously. Thank you. I move for the adoption of the following resolution that will be read in its entirety and is as follows. Whereas the Town of Cicero Board herein referred to as the Town Board intends to construct a highway facility at 6658 New York State Route 31, Town of Cicero, MRB Group completed design plans for site improvements needed for the highway facility. A building contractor required that the lay-down area is to be provided in order to store steel for the building construction. The pad area was to be approximately 60 feet by 270 feet. Whereas the top layer, four to six inches of soil, was not suitable to place fabric and stone, additional over evacuation was required to reach suitable material where fabric and stone could be placed. Other work involved in this excavation is the replacement of unsuitable trench material used for the electrical conduits. JBS completed the over excavation and appropriate work in the trench areas. The fabric and stone placement for the area was part of the original contract. The only additional cost is for the over excavation. The repair of the electrical trench areas is to be paid by the electrical contractor as the trench work for the conduits was not appropriate. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the town board accept the increase in the contract for JBS Dirt Incorporated in the amount of $13,873.71 to cover the over excavation of the lay-down area and the trench repair. The over excavation totaled $10,000, and the trench repair is $3,873.71. Appropriate change order to be authorized for JBS Dirt Incorporated. The town board further resolves that the supervisor be authorized to sign the change order and appropriate documents for this contract modification. Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If nay, any abstentions? We carry unanimously. Thank you. I'll move for the adoption of the following resolution, and I will read it in its entirety as follows. Whereas the Town of Cicero Board herein referred to as the Town Board has awarded the construction of the highway facility at 6658 New York State Route 31, Town of Cicero, the award of the general construction portion of the project was to Building Innovation Group. MRB Group prepared a RFP, a request for proposal, for an additional two feet, for additional two-foot diameter caissons for lean-to expansion based on RFP GC dash 06 for the general contract. Whereas Building Innovation Group prepared a proposal in the amount of $31,735 to install seven additional two-foot diameter caissons with reinforcing anchor bolts and rebar to accommodate lean-to expansion in the future. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the town board accept change order number two, GC dash 02, to Building Innovations Group Incorporated. The town board further resolves that the supervisor affixes signature to change order number two, authorizing the amount of $31,735 to be added to the contract of Building Innovation Group Incorporated. Do you second?
I'll second.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If nay, any abstentions? Pass unanimously. Thank you. I'll move for the adoption of the following resolution to be read in its entirety as follows. Whereas the Town of Cicero Board herein, or hereafter, hereinafter referred to as Town Board, intends to construct a highway facility at 6658 New York State Route 31, Town of Cicero, MRB Group completed design plans for the electrical system in the new building. The project was awarded to Nap Electric Incorporated on July 13th, 2018, by a resolution approved by the Town Board. Whereas Nap Electric installed electrical conduit under future paved areas, approximately 350 feet of electrical trenches were installed. When the over excavation was complete, prepare the area to receive geotextile fabric and stone was found that the electrical trenches were not backfilled with stone as required under paved areas. JBS Dirt Incorporated completed this work as they were on-site undertaking the additional excavation and stone placement in the area. JBS Dirt Incorporated charged $3,873.71 for this work. Since this was a requirement of the electrical contractor, a credit is to be provided to the town in the amount JBS Dirt Incorporated charges. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the town board accept the credit in the amount of $3,873.71 from the contract of Nap Electric Incorporated to cover the cost charged by JBS Dirt Incorporated for trench modification. The town board further resolves that the supervisor be authorized to sign the change order and appropriate documents for the modification of this contract.
Second.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If nay, any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Thank you. Judy?
The Fire Protection District for approval. Move for the adoption of a resolution to authorize supervisor, town clerk, and counselors to approve and execute per the attorney's review the 2019 Fire Protection District agreements as presented for the Broughton Bridgeport Cicero North Syracuse and South Bay Fire Protection District.
We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Personnel. Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve Carol Murphy as a part-time seasonal deputy receiver of taxes at a pay rate of $14.28 an hour effective December 17th, 2018.
Second. Any board comments?
I have a question. Did we go out for an RFP for this? Was it posted as an open job?
She was already employed by us. My full-time, my regular deputy is a snowbird and leaves, and so she moves up from the tax clerk, seasonal tax clerk, to the deputy position while he's gone, and then she goes back down to the seasonal tax clerk line. We have an old-in position for the seasonal tax clerk that has been posted, but a deputy position is an appointee by the receiver, so that's why it wasn't posted.
But does it actually state that, that it reverts back?
Well, when that time comes, she'll resign, and then we'll reappoint at the town board. We're not going to worry about that until it happens, you know?
Okay. Thank you.
Did we receive, did we get a second on that? Okay. Any other board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If nay, any abstentions? Yes, unanimously. Thank you.
Another personnel. Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve the appointment of Steve Procopio as Director of Code Enforcement at a pay rate of $70,385.15 annually effective 1-1-2019.
Second.
Second.
You've got three seconds. Go ahead, Vern will be the second on that, Tracy. Any board comments?
I have a question. Why is it on 1-1 in 2019?
I beg your pardon?
The date when he actually becomes a code enforcement officer?
Well, he is a code enforcement officer.
I'm sorry, the director.
Because he has to be removed from the Teamster. Right now, he's a bargaining unit employee who is under the Teamster Health Plan, and that has to be changed over to the Town Health Plan, and then he has to do a withdrawal from the, from the union, so that it was the recommendation of the, that was the recommendation of the, yeah, yes, I'm sorry. I may have like one of these moments here.
That's all right.
But anyway, that was the recommendation to Shirley so we could get everything buttoned up, and it would all be effective on the first, and the insurances would carry over.
So, who, is he still overseeing the position as long as?
No, I will oversee it. I will oversee the department until December 31st, at 12 a.m.
Thank you.
Any further board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If nay, any abstentions? We carry unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move into, oh, I'm sorry, we have some more. I'm sorry. Judy?
Consolidate Sewer District, contract number four, Broughton WWTP Service Area Improvements. Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve and authorize the supervisor to execute a proposal from O'Brien Gear to provide engineering services related to sanitary sewer improvements within the Broughton WWTP Service Area. The amount is $79,000 and covers design, bid, and construction phase services, and would be billed against an hourly basis in accordance with our Master Professional Services Agreement. The work is being completed based on a $72,500 grant the town received from NYAS, New York State, I'm guessing, EFC, along with the $270,000 in funding assistance from Anadota County to reduce infiltration and inflow into the town's sanitary sewer system.
Second. Any board comments? We, I am going to make one. We have been, and this is according to Anadota County, to what? The Town of Cicero has been a leader in environmental issues in the last three years that we've been here. We have, at the end of 2019, the town have completed, I think we're going to have, what, 21 million gallons of fresh water steam removed from the sanitary sewer system? And our new county executive has told me personally that we have been a leader in this front. And that's important for our environment. We have a lot of, unfortunately, we have a lot of old pipes. In the Town of Cicero, our worst area is down in Bridgeport. And we jumped on this three years ago. We did not want, and I did not want, to be put into a position where the state forced us to take action. We were proactive about it. We jumped right on it. We've been very aggressive in asking for grants and monies to make this thing happen. And I think we have, we also instituted, we're one of the only towns in the county who instituted a plan so that when new businesses come to the Town of Cicero, we actually, we have started a fund where we actually charge them in offset for the gallons of water that they will be putting into the system. We're one of the only towns doing that. And so I'm proud to tell you this year that the state's plan for environmental excellence, if you will, when it comes to sewers, the Town of Cicero will be 25% completed in that, and that makes us one of the leaders in the county on that. So, job well done by our genial people and whatever. Anyway, any other comments on that? Did we get a second? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If nay, any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve $2,703.25 to North Syracuse Central School to seek treasurer for school use for fall programs, pay for budget fees. Budget code be 7020 dot 44.
Second. Any board comments? All those in favor?
No, that's for our fall programs, basketball and basketball.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If nay, any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Tax office. Move to a resolution to approve the contract with Hamer Enterprises for Internet Process Professional Services Agreement to process the online tax payments and to allow the supervisor to sign and approve all necessary documents.
Second.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If nay, any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve $2,599.74 to the Anadota County Department of Finance for the 2018 and 2019 school tax bill postage.
Second.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If nay, any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Thank you. Just make notice, please, that our organizational meeting will be scheduled, or is scheduled, for Thursday, January 3rd, 2019, at 9:30 a.m. It will be held right here at the Cicero Town Hall. That being said, we will be entering into executive session, and the matter to be discussed, we will make motion to enter into executive session related to proposed pending or current litigation, and I will invite our town attorney to join us. We will be reconvening after that time. Jake, can we get a second? Enter to executive session? All in favor?
Aye.
We are reconvening.
Whereas although the Town Council law firm, Jermaine and Jermaine, has never and does not in any way represent the applicant purchaser under contract regarding the property located at 6722 Lake Shore Road, the firm has rendered representation to some of the principals of the purchaser under contract in the past, and whereas... of the principals of the purchaser under contract in the past, and whereas, the town and council, Jermaine and Jermaine, wish to avoid any hinted impropriety, we believe it is the best practice to obtain a written waiver of a potential conflict of interest. It is therefore resolved that the town prove a written letter, sorry, a written waiver of a potential conflict of interest on behalf of the law firm Jermaine and Jermaine and the Chairman of the Planning Board and Town Board are authorized to execute the same.
Second, any further board discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? We pass unanimously.
Can you explain that? I don't understand what just happened.
Robert?
Is that Deborah?
Yeah. Rob, the mic.
Yeah, we're out of caution, Deborah, what we do is, the, there's an applicant for Zonage, Lake Shore Road, and some of the, some of the principles of that are principles that bought Lake Shore Country Club in the past, and when they, when they bought it, my brother and I did some work for them on the beans and on the, especially on the lifting of the beans for, and a couple didn't, Lake Shore had against them, there's a bunch of guys that did it. So we don't, we don't represent the buyer, we never did anything with the buyer, we don't know, we don't know anything about the contract and so on, but it's an ethical issue, you know, you obtain a written waiver, that's what we've done.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a tax office update?
Yeah. Hello. The two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen School and Village Collection settlement must turn over to the town on December fifth in the amount of forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty cents. The two thousand nineteen Town and County collection is fast approaching. We will be mailing out the tax bills December twenty-sixth. The first date we can collect payment for the early pay ease will be December twenty-seventh. The last day to pay without penalty is January thirty-first, and partial payments will be accepted at any point during the collection. We are, we're one of the first towns to use the county's e-tax program for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Village in North Syracuse Collection. This year, we'll be using the e-tax program for all of our collections. This will save the town over eighteen thousand dollars annually in software fees and in reduction in the printing costs of the tax bills.
Excellent, awesome savings, thank you. I just want to say, tomorrow night, too, at our senior center, our new county executive, Ryan McMahon, will be holding his first Town Hall meeting in the Town of Cicero. I would encourage all of you to come, meet Ryan. I personally think he's a great guy, is going to do a lot of good for Anadaga County, but he will review his vision for the county moving forward and then take questions for the audience, so I would invite all of you to come. And before we enter public input, I'd like to, we've been a little bit out of control on public input, so I would like to say that if your item does not directly, you know, come off of the Town Board agenda, if it doesn't apply to this meeting, I would ask you to please reach out to Town Board members, myself, or anyone from the town for questions and answers. We had an incident a couple of weeks ago where we went on for about an hour and a half about things that were voted on a year ago, a year and a half ago, and these things have already been debated and already been decided. So if you have issues regarding tonight's agenda, please come forward, and we'll go from there.
Before you go there, I have something I'd like to discuss, please. Interesting that that part of it comes up because on November twenty-first, I had asked for a copy of the list of all of the residents that received a letter in October regarding the sidewalk shoveling, and I sent it to Heidi in the Zon office, and she informed me that she didn't have anything to do with that, and she would inform Steve and/or Mr. Hooper. I never did receive that list, but I received a message from you, Mark, just telling me of the violations and that any of these folks that had reached out to me had a problem that they could contact the zoning office. So I was also of the understanding that whenever I request something, it has to get clearance from you. Today, I experienced the same thing. I had asked for some paperwork in regards to the abstract. As an elected official, I have the right to ask, and I was told that I had to wait until clearance came from you. I find this offensive, as I've been in this position now for almost a year, and I feel that as an elected official, that as anyone else, I have a right to ask the questions and also in transparency be given the answers. I would appreciate it from this day forward, because I'm making it public, that I cannot do my job as an elected official in the proper way that, which I was elected to represent these people with this distraction. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to approach the board?
Yes. First of all, is it on?
No.
This one works.
Thank you. First of all, I do have some remarks that I prepared, and I didn't do it today's agenda. And the reason why is because I have sent out emails, and I don't get responses from everyone. Sometimes I get it from one person, sometimes two, so I would like to read my inbox if you do not mind. Mr. Vineski explained why all the contracts were removed from the website. I do not believe that that was ever voted on, I could be wrong about that. He told us a vendor had asked that its contract be removed. What services has this vendor provided that cannot be provided by a different entity? The town is the client. A contractor should not be dictated to the town how the town should conduct its business. I suggest that the counselors pass a resolution to have all of the contracts and agreements placed on the website once again. The Town Board should be making these decisions, not one member of the business, especially not a vendor. Now concerning streaming the meetings, I want to thank the two people that did respond to my email on this one. The argument against streaming the board meetings because, quote, "Scout troops and students often attend meetings, and parents express concerns about having their children's faces posted online," unquote, is specious at best. There is a tough no-who rule about attending public meetings, according to Robert Freeman. If you do not want to be recorded, then do not attend the meeting. The concerned parents should, therefore, not allow their children to attend these meetings. Consider that in the last month, images of the Falcon cheerleaders have been posted on the town's website and on Facebook. If you really desire transparency, stream the meetings. If you want, you can always have the camera directed away from the young people. Actually, the board meetings have been to discuss town business. If the attendance of young people is an issue, then do not invite them. And lastly, at the budget hearing, Mr. Vineski suggested that we might wish to foil the foil that led to hiring an attorney to review foils. He claimed that some found it threatening. Well, I have the document here, and neither I nor anyone I have shown this to find anything threatening at all in it. Will you, Mr. Vineski, point out what is threatening? And I have copies right here, if you need to.
I'm well aware of what it says.
And I would like to.
I'm not going to respond, I'm sorry. You can call me tomorrow. I told you, if it is not an issue here, it was discussed before, you're welcome to call me or the board members, but no, I'm not going to get into a debate with you or discussion with you on that tonight.
Well, I'm just asked a question, I don't have to give you an answer, I won't debate it.
I gave an answer before, and I believe you were in attendance. The answer has not changed, it's the same answer.
You said it was threatening, and I want to know what.
No, I had people tell me it was threatening. I didn't declare it threatening.
Well, perhaps you two please go back to those people and find out what's so threatening about it. And I think that by refuse, by only being able to address agenda items instead of other issues, you are not being transparent.
Right.
And you really, it's almost like you're trying to hide something. I don't think you are, but it's like you are. So until every single one of you will start answering every single email, perhaps you should listen to us at the Town Board meetings, and that includes all of you, not just a few that choose to answer.
Thank you, anyone else? There being no one else, I'll make a motion to close?
No.
Oh, one more.
As I have a foil request in on the land at sixty-seven twenty-two Lake Shore Road, I would appreciate it if you remove the hearing on this until after I receive the materials from the foil request, as I am told that it will be at least January twenty-second, and we're not scheduling the hearing for January ninth. Thank you.
Anyone else? There being none, I'll make a motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Drew, did you get your signatures?
No.